Six o'clock, we call our meeting to order. Sarah, will you do the roll?
Ms. Barnes.
Present.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Bush.
Here.
Ms. Truitt.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Approval of the agenda, I don't think there's any changes to the agenda that you've had sent to you.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Truitt, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. Has anyone signed up to speak under the open governmental? Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak under the sunshine law. Approval of the meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Goff to approve meeting minutes as submitted, second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes are approved. We have two public hearings this evening. First one is Dunham Family Transfer.
This public hearing is a request for waiver. The project is Dunham Family Transfer, lots one through four. The file is 2502-048. The developers Jerry Dunham and the surveyors Robert Slanservane. It's located in the Jaredstown District, Tax Map 8, Parcel 22, and is located off of Dunham Road along Olajah Lane, which is a private right-of-way approximately 1.5 miles south from the intersection of Back Creek Valley Road and Dunham Road. The developers proposing four family transfer lots on 19.23 acres to be served by private well and septic. The developers requesting a waiver to Section 302.1.D.1 of the subdivision and land use ordinance requiring a 50-foot right-of-way from the proposed family transfer lots to a WVDOH right-of-way. Jerry and Vicki Dunham created the existing non-exclusive 30-foot right-of-way in 1982. The right-of-way dissects four parcels which are no longer owned by Jerry and Vicki Dunham before terminating at Dunham Drive. Having those four property owners dedicate 20 feet of additional right-of-way is not feasible, especially since Dunham Drive is only 40 feet wide. Given the information provided, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 302.1.D.1 contingent on the following: that the right-of-way be increased to 50 feet on the proposed lots, and proposed lots one through four enter into a road maintenance agreement to ensure future repair and maintenance of the road.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Mike Roberts represents the project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your questions and comments known regarding this particular project. Ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have.
If there is no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Let the record show that there's no one to speak from the public regarding the project. A motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing. Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or of the staff?
Madam President, no questions for me. Just by way of comment, as we're working our way through the new subdivision ordinances, I think there are some issues or quirks that are now coming out with actually how those will be implemented. So I guess my clarifying comment in support of the waiver is that this is nonetheless a narrowly tailored waiver, that all the new lots are being brought in compliance with the width required. And if we were to follow the true black and white letter of the ordinance without looking at this specific project, the actual right-of-way width for these individual four lots will be greater than the right-of-way width that it would access from the state road. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Yeah. And so, you know, the tertiary roads would be wider than the state road that this dumps out on. And so I think we have to have a measure of reasonableness that this is an existing condition, has been for decades, this is a family transfer, and there's also consideration of the state road right-of-way that this would dump out on. So I just want to provide that, some context, so that is undoubtedly this is going to be a waiver request I foresee that we see again, not only tonight but in the future. And so just kind of with that narrow lens is how I look at it.
Okay. Well, I think she describes all that in the staff report too.
Well, I will say, you know, we've already discussed that there would already be three waivers for the same section of the ordinance that has been requested. You'll see another tonight, one next week. We've already thought about how we should have worded the language, but I don't think we thought in these right-of-ways, obviously less than they require 50. They wouldn't be. So something we should have thought about, but I'm sure we'll work.
Can I ask a question? So what you're saying is there's a 30-foot right-of-way with the DH1, 400 lot subdivision contingent. They say you don't want to do 50-foot right-of-ways, which is standard. Put the 30 throughout the whole subdivision, they'll allow that.
No, I don't think there's...
Well, that's kind of why this was written, because it was. In other words...
What do you mean?
I mean, I could see waivers coming in wherever subdivision is. The precedent is being laid there for that to happen. What you're saying is, well, in this case, if it's only 30 feet, I understand that there is a right-of-way that was created in 1982. Like, I think the reason needs to be that right-of-way was created in 1982. There's no way they can improve upon that to the way it should be because of the way. Therefore, the way was being made. Doc has anything to do with the state right-of-way. Agreed?
That's my position, yes.
Thank you.
If I'm dedicating the right-of-way, it's just dedicating that 50 feet of right-of-way to the road, then like it'd be more than likely a railroad road, that's called.
But in the... Once again, I see these covas, a year or two or several down the road, as now we want to do counthouses back, but we don't want to do that. Now we want to do this. And I'm stuck with the 30-foot right-of-way, and I can't do anything about it. That's what I'm trying to get across is, you put a... I didn't get to review this, because I don't do family transfers, but what I'm saying, this is a real slip and snub. If you... It's how you want to frame the waiver. I go by it has nothing to do with the state right-of-way. This is an existing right-of-way that's already been done. They can't go back and get more right-of-ways. And would it hurt to have this 30-foot right-of-way back to Dunham? Although my caveat would be no further development without getting a 50-foot right-of-way back to the state. Because this is what usually, it comes back to me later in the larger subdivision, now we want to do 500 houses, and we're not going to give you the other 20-foot right-of-ways. Put a regular improved section to the 30-foot right-of-way, you can't do that. Just food for thought, that's all.
So are you in opposition?
No, I just didn't like where that was going. I'm trying to stop, I'm trying to stop several subdivisions from shutting up in here tomorrow morning, wanting a 30-foot right-of-way.
What is the relationship to the entrance permit? In your example of if this were to become a larger subdivision?
Well, they would have to go get an entrance permit if you got that. DH1 is not going to amend their right-of-way out there. There's no way to go out here unless this property at the front, what is that, Parcel 6.4? If Parcel 6.4 was included, you could get a 50-foot, you could get an additional 15-foot reservation to make up for the 50-foot right-of-way on this state highway. But if that parcel's not included, there would be any improvement out there on the state right-of-way. There'd be no reservation because they don't have it to do. We would have to either deny the whole thing or live with it. And that's what I'm, all I'm trying to point out is, don't, please don't base this on the state highway. Base it on, this right-of-way that exists from the state highway that they're moving attached to is only 30 feet, and it would be egregious to make a deal. Right?
Well, that's the basis of our waiver request, is because of the existing 30-foot private right-of-way, not the state right-of-way.
Yes, thank you. But it's also a 30-foot state right-of-way. I don't have one. Right, but this isn't trying to...
I think Doug's point is by us making a right-of-way back to those newly proposed lots, 50 feet, done everything we can, have that 50-foot right-of-way there. Somebody could come through in the future and purchase that right-of-way off of DJ's property owners, but at least in the back, we've dedicated our budget to that.
But there's also a conversation about a third possible contingency of no further development, and while I think that's great, I just, I don't know that we've got the authority to do that.
But subdivision regulations wouldn't allow it to be the way it is now without getting that extra bit to the front for 50 feet, so...
Why?
Or to have a 50-foot right-of-way minimum. So if they were...
So anything more than a family transfer?
Correct.
Will trip the 50-foot requirement?
For the design of roadway.
So then how do we get to, and I'm sorry to belabor the point, maybe I'm dense on this, how do we...
Any driveway you're hitting flag box, it's bigger than 400 feet. Okay, that's the limit, that's what it says. With a 400-feet limit, you can have a 25-foot wide access there out to the roadway. You alter that. But after 400 feet, like on preliminary title or something like that, then we would be looking for a 50-foot right-of-way mainly because the distance is being reversed, greater than 400 feet.
But walk me through, how does, we've got a family transfer proposal here with a less than a 50-foot right-of-way. If it's a larger subdivision project, if it's a major plan which would require a larger right-of-way, how does approval of a family transfer with a limited waiver in this respect? How does that in the future create a possibility for a large subdivision? And how do we get there if there's a 50-foot requirement?
Well, all I'm saying is, this road from the state highway back to where this subdivision starts, family transfer starts, you would have to live with that 30-foot right-of-way if somebody decided to come back in and do a major subdivision, because if they don't have this right-of-way, we would force them to go get it, but more than likely they'll come back in and say, well, you gave it to them for this because the state highway was only 30 feet wide. All I'm saying is, please don't confuse the issue. In other words, the state highway has nothing to do with the reason for that.
Understood, but we're still discussing a waiver that'll set precedent, and I'm just trying to understand...
They would still need a waiver for a major subdivision.
Right.
So they would have to come back in for another waiver and utilize that 30 feet right-of-way, and then we have a 30-foot right-of-way up off of Dunham. Our preference would obviously be for them to purchase, acquire, whatever, the extra width, and that's what's required of a subdivision. If somebody was to come back in and say, hey, I want to develop this parcel right here, a divided commercial, whatever, we would still need a waiver, but without getting an extra width.
And Doug, your point on that is the way this becomes a larger subdivision is that the developer at that point in time, in the future, says, well, you granted it once before, you need to grant it again now.
Any major subdivision, they could come in here and say, hey, I want to build something off of Harlan Springs, and it's a 30-foot right-of-way, and I'm not going to do the 50-foot right-of-way in the subdivision, because you said that you should, by the state debate here tonight, it opens the door for a bunch of these to come in and shore it up. We may as well stop it.
I don't want to make any issues more complicated, but my tenure on this commission, which is many, many, many years, in courts of law, we were determined to not ever set a precedent. So when you say you did it, you have to do it again. I think when you go through the court of law, if you research it, you'll find that the planning commission cannot set precedence, does not set precedence. So I don't think that, you know, is an issue. You know, we have had subdivisions over the years that couldn't obtain a 50-foot right-of-way, and where do they sit? Undeveloped. Right?
I've seen some that haven't had 50-foot right-of-ways.
But then that's up to this board to grant that and have to live with that. That's the crux of it. Okay, is there any further questions?
I just have one additional question on the road maintenance. It's for these four lots, not the first four, they traverse that same 30-foot right-of-way till they get back there, and all of them would have to maintain that road?
My understanding is the road maintenance agreement would just be for the four lots being created to maintain that 1,100-foot road that traverses through those four lots.
I mean, I think it's a little difficult to leave a family transfer lot up to decent property owners that don't own the property, may not be related. There's nothing in our ordinance, and there's nothing legally that states that those people have to enter into a road maintenance agreement with these new property owners. I'm just trying to cover the new lots, the new road, they're going to be accessing it. That's all I can do.
Let me ask one more question, to try to play out these scenarios. So if we presented with the waiver request, and if we say, look, there's only four lots here, it's not that big of a burden, you could probably get some sort of emergency apparatus in the back to these lots, not a whole lot of trips generated, not that big a deal. The other end of the spectrum is, this is going to be a 200-unit subdivision, that they're going to make an argument to say that, well, you granted the waiver once before, you should grant it again. Seems like there could be a lot of areas in the middle, and that's, and sorry you're bearing the brunt of this conversation, but I think, you know, we're thinking in the future here, what if this is 20 units? I think that waiver request becomes a lot more difficult.
Wouldn't be a family transfer, the 20 units, would it?
No. Which family transfers, you guys don't ever hear, see anything about these family transfers. They're minor subdivision flats. They're only reviewed by the planning departments, they're not reviewed by engineering. But this is the first time you guys have seen anything like this, and I can, I can let you know, like, 90% of family transfer flats look exactly like this. The requirements for family transfer or major subdivision plans are very, very different. And once you get out of family transfer, or once you get over more than four lots, you're giving us a 50-foot right-of-way without waivers.
Okay. All right, I think we've beat this enough, ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for the waiver, given that the original right-of-way was established in 1982, and that the 50-foot right-of-way will be adhered to for the new four acres, or four lots, after you pass the original right-of-way, and that the four lots enter into a road maintenance agreement.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to approve the staff recommendation, and that is to grant the right-of-way for the, provided that there's a 50-foot right-of-way proposed for the lots, and that the one through four lots enter into a road maintenance agreement to ensure future repair and maintenance of the road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? No notes? No notes?
I'm a yes.
You're a yes, okay.
A yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is Gabriel Calhoun, Family Transfer.
Yes, this public hearing is also a request for waiver. The project is Gabriel Calhoun Family Transfer, filed 2502-051. The developer is Nick O'Brien and Bryn Calhoun, and the surveyor is Greg Yerbenetsky. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 16, Parcel 15, and is located on the west side of Files Crossroad, approximately half a mile north from its intersection with Shepherdstown Road. The developer's proposing a five-acre residential lot to be served by private well and septic, and this subdivision would create a 13.5-acre residue which is currently improved. The developer's requesting a waiver to Section 302.1.D.1 of the subdivision and land use ordinance requiring a 50-foot right-of-way from the proposed family transfer lots to the WVDOH right-of-way. The residue parcel was created under family transfer exemption in 2000. It's accessed via a 40-foot right-of-way, which is Grace Avenue off of Files Crossroad, and then has a 24-foot access easement, which is Shetland Hill Road, that goes back to the proposed lot. The previous owner of the adjacent farm created Grace Avenue in 1960, and I could not find any information about whether or not a road maintenance agreement was already existing. The subject parcel does have a 15-foot right-of-way to Files Crossroad at the northern part of the parcel, but the 15-foot right-of-way access is not feasible for a new residential lot. Based on the information provided, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 302.1.D.1 contingent on the following: that the right-of-way be increased from 24 feet to 50 feet on the residue parcel and back to the new parcel, and that proposed lot 3A owners and the residue parcel owners enter into a road maintenance agreement to ensure future repair and maintenance of Shetland Hill Road.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? Sorry?
Sorry. Bree Calhoun.
Okay. So you were the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Questions or comments regarding this project, please?
If there are no questions or comments, I move to close public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing with no public being brought up. Need a second. Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed. Okay, do you have questions of the applicant or of the staff?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. Off of Grace Avenue, there is a 24-foot right-of-way that will have to expand to 50-foot once you pass that lot, which is, doesn't have a number, but from that point on back, which would serve the resident lot 3A and lot 3A.
Yeah, there's also two parcels in the back that use that road for access. I believe you guys would know better than I do, but the way it looks, they use that road for access, but the only two people that we can make is... Lot and another.
Let me ask a question, just to play this out in a different scenario. So we've got 24 feet coming from Grace Avenue back to the residue parcel, existing, right, next to the Hostettler piece. And so if this weren't a family transfer, if somebody wanted to put 15 lots back there, the developer would have to request a waiver to reduce the 50-foot right-of-way requirement down to 24?
Or purchase the right-of-way.
Or purchase the right-of-way, at which point it would be up to this body to analyze that waiver, and then that becomes then the question of how many houses are enough to require something more than the existing right-of-way.
Yeah. What's the, what's the reason for the... What's the reason? Just in general, other than the obvious.
We operated under the 2009 ordinance far too long. And what we were coming and seeing was, we're doing family transfer subdivision flats, only dedicating 30 feet of right-of-way, and then coming back and wanting to develop that property further. So they were stuck in a corner, and we were stuck in a corner. So we're preemptively trying to dedicate as much right-of-way as possible, anywhere that we can, because in the future, they could do whatever. I mean, a national builder could come in and purchase all of these lots and develop all of it. So it's kind of where we're at with it, it's why it was written into the new ordinance. We know it has some quirks, we'll have to work it out, but that was the reason.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Make a motion?
Yep.
Make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for the waiver, contingent on the right-of-way increase from 24 feet to 50 feet back to the residue parcel and to lot 3A, and that there is a road maintenance agreement for the residue lot in 3A.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant the right-of-way, provided that the right-of-way, grant the family transfer, provided that the right-of-way be increased from 24 to 50 feet, and the proposed lot 3A owners and the residue lot owners enter into a maintenance agreement to ensure the future repair and maintenance of the road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, preliminary plan approval, I'm sorry. Preliminary plan approval for Five Star Auto Spa.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Five Star Auto Spa, filed 2308-269. The developer is Five Hanol LLC, and the engineer is JHA Companies. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 5G, Parcell 25 through 31. This site's located at the intersection of Apple Harvest Drive and Winchester Avenue. This project proposes a 6,855-square-foot car wash and a 10,290-square-foot vacuum enclosure on 1.46 acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 802.1.B.IA of the subdivision ordinance requiring a 25-foot buffer between a commercial and residential use. On December 19th, 2024, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The preliminary plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends approval of the preliminary plan.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
My name's Hong Kim.
I'm sorry?
Hong Kim.
Okay. Planning Commission members, do you have questions, Mr. Kim, or of the staff?
Do you have a question? Obviously, anyone who knows the area, the first thing they probably think of is traffic, so entrance and exits. Looks like you're, what you're coming off of Winchester Avenue, is that what it is?
Right in and right out.
Yeah.
DH1, record DH1, and don't request the traffic study. DH1 did request to enforce, dedicate a right turn lane as possible, back along the line that it did. That's as low as it can be. That was DH1's, I would, if they did limit, intersection of 45 to, you know, limited access, right in and right out.
Is there any other way to do it? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm just, I'm not going to tell you that it's not the...
Okay.
What I'm telling you is, I can't say it's not the best place in the world to do anything.
Right. It just seems like maybe Winchester Avenue would be the, you know, one of the entrances, but coming off of, off of 45 and a half, it really doesn't make sense to me.
Well, it is a right out, so, you know, not like you have a left turn move, old boats, so that is much better than, providing for a left turn movement on those ways as well, that would be a real step there. That would be a real step there.
And they also moved, if you're thinking about it a lot, the way it originally was set out by that bank, they moved that entrance further towards Martinsburg.
They moved as far as they could from the intersection, which is much better. There was actually an entrance, the old entrance for the bank, was literally at the intersection. Right. Which was, you know, that we got rid of. So I was happy to make one, I mean, you know, one problem though.
They acquired more property.
Yeah.
And we tried to look at an alternative, help to the shopping center. They could not get access to the, to the.
Point being, maybe for our friends at the Department of Highways who are watching this evening, it does seem somewhat extraordinary that maybe the busiest intersection in all of Berkeley County, yeah, it's, I shouldn't say that. A very busy intersection in all of Berkeley County doesn't impose heightened scrutiny from the Department of Highways, and that seems a bit extraordinary to me.
The alley just factors, is that what you're talking about? No, they, they're going to improve part of it. Their usage now is part of the bailout money.
Mr. Kim, do you have anything to add since you are the representative?
Not in particular, yeah.
Okay. Ready for motion?
I'll make a motion before I do that. I just want to make sure that everyone understands that this project was headed quite often in here through all this process. We had a lot of people from the county that travel Apple Harvest in here, talking about road conditions and stuff like that. Obviously, we have no control over the roads, but I believe that the applicant has done a lot to work with the county and the planning department to get it through. So I'll make a motion to accept staff recommendations, approval of the preliminary plan.
Second.
I have a motion of Mr. Lewis, second of Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary plan for Five Star Auto Spa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, preliminary final plot approval. Rodolphy?
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plot approval. The project is Rodolphy, File 2407-216. The developer is Kevin Rodolphy, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Jaredstown District, Tax Map 24, Parcel 11.4. This project's located on the north side of Sawmill Road, one and a half miles west of the intersection with Back Creek Valley Road. The project proposes the creation of one 9.28-acre residential lot and a five-acre residue to be served by private well and septic. On March 13th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The project is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plot.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project? Mr. Roberts?
Yes, Mike Roberts.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or the staff?
Madam President, here in Nana, make a motion to accept staff recommendation for approval of the preliminary final.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Bush, second of Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to approve the preliminary final plot for Rodolphy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, final plot determination. Nestle Junction.
Yes, this is a request for final plot determination. The project is Nestle Junction, Section 2, Lots 3 through 6. The file is 2411-340. The developer is Stewart Properties LLC, and the surveyor is Site Planning, Design and Survey. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 6.1. The property is located on the north side of Grade Road, approximately 350 feet east of its intersection with Kitchens Orchard Road. The developer is proposing four single-family residential lots on 11.27 acres to be served by public water and private septic. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On March 17th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plot meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plot determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, do you have anyone to represent Nestle Junction?
Dan Llewellyn, Site Planning, Design and Survey.
Hello, Mr. Llewellyn. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Llewellyn or the staff?
There are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendation for final plot determination and advertising of public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second of Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to consider the project for final plot approval at May 5th, Public Hearing Planning Commission Meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
He's required to bring tacos out there since that's a good idea.
Ah.
It's Linda's forte.
Yeah.
This is also a request for final plot determination. The project is Southbrook, Section 2, Phase 5, Townhouse Lots 138 through 145 and 162 through 169, and Single Family Lots 222 through 239 and 252 through 258, 261 through 263, and 300 through 312. The file is 2412-397, and the developer is Chandler's Glen LLC. The engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 3, Parcel 9. The property is located on Shiley Road, approximately 0.3 miles north of Hattery Road. This final plot proposes 41 single-family lots and 16 townhouse lots on 44.84 acres to be served by public water and sewer. On March 20th, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plot meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plot determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? Southbrook?
My name is Mark McDonald. I'm with Integrity Federal Services, representing the client.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. McDonald or the staff?
There are no questions, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for final plot determination and advertising of the public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Lewis, second of Mr. Truitt, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on May 5, at which time the final plot will be considered for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Communities of Burwell.
This is a request for final plot determination. The project is Communities of Burwell, Phase 11, Lots P1 through 14, H26 through 37, Stormwater Management Area 13, and Open Space 14 through 16 and 19. The file is 2410-301. The developer is Burwell Properties LLC, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 13, Parcel 10.4, and is located on Nighttown Road, approximately one mile from its intersection with Weaver Lane. The project proposes 28 residential lots on 20.15 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers have been submitted for this section. On April 3rd, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plot meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plot determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Roberts, are you on again?
Mike Roberts represents the project.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Roberts or the staff?
I do, I may for both, Madam President.
Okay.
I've asked this question before. Forgive me for asking it again. I'm looking at 2007 dates for traffic study and school impact analysis. When are those required to be updated as projects linger for this long?
They were updated.
Since 2007?
During the planned change of 2009.
Uh huh.
Traffic studies updated this year.
Uh huh.
Did not revise.
Uh huh.
However, what I will tell you is, this is just because of these three flats that it came along with, 11, 12, and 13. It was a re-review of what the requirements really were out of the traffic study. This is what I will tell you. They haven't reached the threshold yet to put the left turn at Nighttown to practice.
And that's 281 lots?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the trigger. And that happens right after Phase 12, the next phase of construction. After that, they have 30 lots left that they could plant. Then, this improvement has to be made. By understanding that the improvement out of the block drive that, that's all that was ever required.
Mm-hmm.
And just literally these three flats. It was kind of like, I had to go back and recreate. But it was looked at in 2018 again, although there's new, I could not find a paper trail for DOH. The traffic study was revised, and they had to revise it because of the number of apartments they were. And they changed the number of townhouses. It was kind of, they actually ended up with less lots.
Mm-hmm.
But it was a little bit less traffic, and that's why DOH probably was there.
Mm-hmm. And so all of this is consistent with the initial preliminary plan? What is the trigger, though? Where DOH says, when you take another look at this? Is it surrounding conditions?
It's three years.
Uh huh.
An increase, it's two years, an increase in 80 to four, access to an intersection that created a problem.
Which could be the result of additional development outside of this.
My argument with them originally was if this happened, could look at this background, try to include here, it would trigger warrants that didn't trigger in 2007. I just know, I travel this road every day. So I can tell you that if they, you did a left turn or a right turn, it would be a lot. But I think they were looking at other things back in '07. And there was, they were looking at a relief plan. There were other things in play back then. That's kind of why some of the right-of-ways helped you. If you look like, well, right now, DOH wanted 35-foot of right-of-way, I'd say, a part of the subdivision, only 25 feet down here, and I think that comes from, best we can tell, and I've ever been able to resolve it, that is what the developer said is, DOH was looking at a relief plan that was going to go across country. And it never did. There was a lot of discussion in the area about, basically connected with revert. But it never did. But yes, right now, everything's compliant, the net zone is all.
Yeah.
When they get, like I said, after, we'll see another final plot based Section 12 again. In 13, they have to revise that. That's, we reviewed it already. They have to cut either, do one of two things. Before 13 could come before you, they either have to cut it back to only 30 lots, or they have to have these improvements done before you sit.
And who's responsible for those improvements? Is it DOH or the developer?
Developer.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
I'm just going to ask the question, the entrance off of Nighttown, has that been resolved where it's actually not stacking up people waiting on school buses?
Well, this, this application provides for a second entrance on to Nighttown, which will alleviate some of the...
Some of that.
The way it's configured right now, there is another entrance down here, that technically the school buses could utilize. And we have to pick up kids and loop back out in the morning instead of picking up kids out of Nightfield with all the parents parked out there. And the best, I mean, actually, if we could, if we could get the school to do that, that would be well and great. That was the whole purpose of trying to get the left turn later.
To get that traffic off of Nighttown.
Yeah. Basically, to stop the school bus from loading it off.
And you said the entrance on Rob is not required until the next?
Yes.
The next one?
That was, that was decided way back through original project.
Additional questions? If not, ready for motion?
Madam President? I make a motion to accept staff recommendations for final plot determination and advertising of public hearing for the consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Lewis, second of Mr. Bush, to conduct a public hearing on May 5, at which time the final plot will be considered for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more, Communities of Burwell for Phase 12.
Yes, this request for final plot determination is for Communities of Burwell, Phase 12, Lots J9 through J18 and L39 through L46. The file is 2410-302. The developer is Burwell Properties LLC, and the surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 13, Parcel 10, or 10.4, I'm sorry. The property is located on Nighttown Road, approximately one mile from its intersection with Weaver Lane. The project proposes 18 residential lots on 1.86 acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers have been submitted for this section. On April 3rd, 2025, County Engineer Doug Smith deemed the above-mentioned project compliant with the subdivision ordinance. The final plot meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plot determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Roberts? Whenever you go down Nighttown Road, all you see is, you know, the townhouses lined up. Is there any improvements or any kind of amenities that are in the other side of those townhouses that you can't see from Nighttown Road?
And as part of the development, there is a large recreational area right in the middle, which...
Yeah. Well, you can't see it from Nighttown Road.
It's not, it hasn't been built yet.
Oh, okay. That makes sense.
It's on the approved preliminary plat, preliminary plan.
Play drill.
Almost the size of a soccer field, really.
Yeah, well, you know where the existing brick houses, right in the recreation?
Yeah.
Behind that, there's a park, they got a little park.
Small, that's a small park.
There's basically a soccer field back there, too. But it's not done yet. That's, that's being bonded up.
And none of the residents are complaining that they don't have their amenities?
There was nothing ever. Once again, this goes back, you know, not saying it's anyone's fault. This goes back to the original approval back prior to 2006. Now, no requirements for when the amenities can get built. Some developers literally will say, with the last house and build, they do the amenities. Now, in the new ordinance, has been changed. The amenities must progress with the build out of the development here. So if he builds, if he comes in here for a final plot and it's half subdivision, half the amenities have to be there. We would put that, and the amenities are now bonded.
Yeah, just a... A lot of residences, and I was just curious as to what kind of amenities they were offering, like pool, tennis courts, pickleball. Any number of improvements that could be for...
I prefer a doggy park.
Yeah, well, that's because you're a dog. I mean, you're...
She said that. She said that one.
Yeah, I know.
Well, you told me, you told me you liked certain things that make me think, huh?
That was a good one.
Yeah, good, huh? Okay, is there any further questions now? Now that we've established Mr. Smith's heritage.
I will make a motion that we accept staff recommendations for final plot determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plot approval at the May 5th, 2025.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Truitt, to accept staff recommendation, and again, a public hearing will be held on May 5th, to which time we will consider the final plot for approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Comprehensive plan update. That's your job, yep.
So, last week, we had our joint kickoff meeting on Thursday, and Linda and Tim and Mike came and met with the Berkeley group, and we kind of went through the process of the comp plan and talked about some things. So, this week, we have the first public workshop on Wednesday from 2:00 to 4:00. The survey is live, it's online. I've sent all of that information out to the roundtable. It's blasted on Facebook, it's blasted in the Journal, it's all over the website. We have paper copies at the libraries and at our office, so. That's about it. We're just trucking through.
You may want to say that. We asked that if you see that out there, share it on your social media posts and where people in the county are getting a look at it and maybe offering some insight.
Please.
We would encourage everybody to come by.
I'll take 20 minutes of.
Yep, nice, tight little.
And please do survey.
Move to adjourn if there's nothing else.
I have one more.
Hold on. Mr. Bush is thinking.
I won't belabor this too much. My thought, just back to Communities of Burwell, at least to me, the concern about bus traffic has come up multiple times, but for the first time this evening, a proposed solution has come forth, at least in a public setting that I'm aware of, of this loop through the neighborhood. I'm not suggesting that the Planning Commission dictate anything with private property or tell the school board where to run their bus routes, but it may be helpful. And Lynch, I don't want to put you on the spot either. I'm curious your thoughts. It may be helpful to make them aware that this road exists, and there is concern in the community about public safety with school pickup and drop-off on a main road, and that they might reach out to the developer, probably not HOA yet, but they may reach out to the developer to see if there is a mutually agreeable solution, or maybe not. You could talk me either way on this. I don't think the Planning Commission should be involved in that level of detail, but at the same time, to me, the solution came forth for the first time tonight, and an "oh, by the way" letter might not hurt.
I had thought about that, your exact suggestion said about two weeks ago. I was actually doing, something that was supervisor for education and state, this is now. I would do that without Planning Commission. But if you want me to, I'd want to do that. Get with my little exhibit put together, just to put it on email. I could send that over to him, make this.
Yeah, Doug, if you do that, you know, copy us, you know, like on an email or something. I know a resident that's in there that has reached out to me multiple times about the traffic right there at Nighttown, and he tries to get out to go to work, and he cannot get out. So, I will reach out to him as part of his homeowners, that they should be contacting the school board.
Yeah, and I think the developer should be involved as well. I don't want to tell the developer what to do with.
That's why I go through, I'll go through my.
Okay. Yeah.
I just, I would just put a little thing together for them, show them that they could use this accessway to stop and in the subdivision in the morning. Kids would be part of it for night time. Would be any reason for anybody to be out in the valley.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to adjourn. Need a second? Second by Mr. Truitt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, 6:55.